Mary Jo, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Erin Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Okay, will you all please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance? And then afterwards, we'll have opening remarks by Councilman Erin Barowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask those that want to, please bow your head. Dear Lord Jesus, thank you for this wonderful year that we just had. Two thousand and twenty-three was a wonderful year for the city of Brooklyn. I'm looking forward to the blessings and the opportunities that you are going to create for those that live in this community and work in this community in two thousand and twenty-four. And I pray for your blessings upon all of us. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have approval of minutes from December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I just had a couple minor corrections. Page two, second paragraph, tenth line up from the bottom. We just need to insert where it says their next will be. We just need their next meeting will be in January. And then on page five, fourth paragraph, third line up from the bottom, where it said Councilwoman Pucci said, and then it went on from there, it should be asked. Are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, we need a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
To approve the minutes as amended, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to the mayor. We have a presentation of our Ready, Certified Recertification Plaque by the Cuyahoga County Office of Emergency Management. And gentlemen, if you want to step up to the podium, please.
Thank you so much for being here for just to take it away. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Christie. I'm the county emergency manager for Cuyahoga County. And it's our pleasure to be here tonight. I'm standing with David Wood from our office, Senior Emergency Management Specialist who administers this program, our Ready, Certified Program. If you were around in two thousand and sixteen, you may have a faint memory of us being here. That was the city of Brooklyn's initial certification through our program. For those that weren't around for that, if you just bear with me, I'll give a little description of the program and hopefully give you a little bit of insight as to why it definitely is an accomplishment for Brooklyn to have gone through this process to recertify. So if you're unfamiliar with emergency management, a lot of what we're doing at the county level is trying to prepare and ensure coordination exists that when large events happen in our county, that all the different moving parts, police, fire departments, schools, service departments, that don't necessarily work with one another, are going to be capable of working together to respond and recover from a large event. So to do that, we host trainings, we plan and facilitate exercises, we write plans, we help communities write plans. Again, just all an effort to make sure that we're going to be working off the same sheet of music when, you know, Community A is potentially providing assistance to Community B and C, that, you know, that they may not normally work with one another. One of the programs that we implement to try to pursue that coordination is our Ready, Certified Certification Program. And this program was originally implemented, I think, in two thousand and fifteen. And it's a standards-based program that sets benchmarks for where we think communities should be at, that constitute a strong public safety and emergency management capability. The standards are based off of best practices and lessons learned from other events throughout, you know, throughout the country and the world. And they're attainable, but they're rigorous. And again, we wrote these standards really in an effort to say that this is the level that we think, you know, a community should be at, and it's doing all it can be to ensure their, you know, their citizens and their community are as capable to respond to an incident and recover from that incident as possible. Those standards transcend things like different planning elements, exercise elements, training elements. And again, none of this is obligatory. This is totally voluntary. And Brooklyn is in a small minority of communities that have gone through this process initially, you know, several years ago, and then once again to recertify through our five-year recertification process. So it really is an accomplishment. It's a testament to your safety forces, you know, your chiefs and Lieutenant Knapp, I heard worked really, you know, extensively on this. It's a testament to those individuals that take this seriously, that want to partner with Cuyahoga County and make sure that we're doing everything we can together to ensure that our residents are as safe and where as prepared as possible to respond and recover from emergencies. So with that, I just want to read the plaque, if you permit me, and then I'll present it to one of the chiefs. I know they're both potentially a little bashful in receiving it, but we'll.
Do the chiefs want to step up for the presentation, please?
So it is, "In recognition of Brooklyn's enduring commitment to emergency preparedness and the safety and well-being of its citizens and the public, is with great honor that Brooklyn has declared recertified in Cuyahoga County's Ready, Certified Emergency Management Certification Program." So again, congratulations.
I was going to give it to Lieutenant Knapp. He's such a publicity officer.
If you would mind, gentlemen, if I could just take a quick photo. Photo bomb. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have our first public session. If anyone has in the audience has anything to say pertaining to any item on our agenda this evening, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Kelly Kroll, one zero five two three Manoa Avenue. I am not speaking for or against the DEI Commission. I just wanted to tell you that I think you made the right decision to postpone the vote until after the first of the year. Voting on legislation for the sake of voting on legislation doesn't make for good leadership. You need to have a clear and concise vision of what you want this DEI Commission to accomplish, a framework detailing the mission statement of the group and the responsibilities of the contributing members. Shoving eleven people in a room and telling them to figure it out is irresponsible, not to mention they won't be Commission members for life. They need to have a blueprint to guide them in the right direction so they are successful in meeting the goals of the Commission and serving our community properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say relating to any item on our agenda this evening? Okay, we'll move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I'll start with the Finance Committee. First, the Finance Committee is back and meeting. And we did have an organizational meeting. I was elected chairperson, and I thank my colleagues for that. The other two members are Councilwoman Selhertz and Councilman Barowski. And our standard meeting will be at six P. M. prior to each regularly scheduled council meeting. If we have a lengthy agenda or a topic where we believe it will take more time, we will adjust our times accordingly, and we will post appropriately. There was one item we addressed on our agenda this evening, and that was Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash one, which is on first reading. But the administration has requested suspension of, or I'm sorry, adopting under suspension of the rules. And this is authorizing a community cost share agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. This is for eleven thousand, six hundred dollars, and this project was completed in two thousand and twenty-three. This is so we can get our reimbursement from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. The Finance Director, Raguz, he advised us that the end-of-the-year closing is complete, and there are no surprises, and we will get all the information in our monthly report at their next meeting, and that the auditors have already reached out to him, so that is underway. That completes the Finance Committee report. Next is the Committee of the Whole. We did have a speaker, and we did run a little bit over. We apologize for that. We had a representative from the Moreland Hills DEI Commission, and it was Ms. Lori Uragdi Eiler. And she did have a lot of information to share. The Committee of the Whole did recommend to council everything on our agenda this evening, including deferring the legislation for our own Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Commission, which is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash forty. We are going to schedule a special meeting so that we can have an in-depth discussion and get everybody's questions answered. And that completes my report. When it is my turn for regular council report, I'll report on the organizational meeting. Next is Public Safety and Environmental, and that is Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. This past Monday, we had our organizational meeting for the Safety and Environmental Committee, where Councilmembers Sue Grodick and Stephen Coyle voted me Chair of the Committee, which I am grateful for. So thank you again for giving me the opportunity. We will meet when matters come up, calling for a meeting to take place. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Public Works Committee, Councilman Selhertz.
Good evening. Public Works Committee met after the organizational meeting last week. Committee consists of myself as the chair, Councilwoman Kathy Pucci, and Councilman Matt Mosley. We'll also meet as needed, when needed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to reports of council, and this evening, we begin with Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. I was appointed to the Domestic Abuse Commission at City Council last week. That is something that I am looking forward to being very involved with in the community. I want to thank former Councilwoman Megan Shaki for giving me her notes from her previous meetings, and I look forward to working with the other members so we can bring awareness to the community of different types of abuse, be it domestic, be it sexual, be it senior, work, and many others. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Tansky, and I was also just informed that he's also going to provide a report from the Recreation Board.
Thank you, Councilman Pucci. Councilwoman Pucci. Let's get that right. January is National Skating Month. Join us for a great To Skate Day on January twenty-eighth, from two forty-five P. M. to four P. M. This is a free session for skaters of all ages. Registration is required and is currently open. Skates fees do apply. Adult slapshot hockey, hockey skills and game practice for adults only eighteen and up, Monday, Thursday, and Friday, ten to eleven thirty A. M. Check online for updates due to holiday closures. Drop-ins welcome. No registration required. Costs ten dollars per person with no BRC membership. BRC account required. Brooklyn Youth Volleyball Spring two thousand and twenty-four are for grades three to four coed and grades five to six coed. Resident fees sixty dollars. Registration, January eighth through February fifth. Practices begin each of March fourth. Games begin March twenty-third tentatively. Must be Brooklyn resident or student attending a school city limits. Teams will practice once during the week at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse. Games will be played at home and away sites on Saturdays, Fairview Park, North Homestead, Middleburg Heights. Volunteer coaches are needed for all leagues. Please let us know if registration is your, you are interested and able to coach. Register online at W W W dot Brooklyn Rec dot com or R E C I N F O at BrooklynOhio.gov or call two one six three five one five three three four. Senior Center events for January are as follows. January tenth, Bingo at one P. M., Oak Street Health. January eleventh, Snowman Craft at nine thirty A. M., costs ten dollars. January twelfth, Energy at ten A. M. January seventeenth, Senior Center Open House, nine A. M. to twelve P. M. Complimentary Chair Yoga starting at nine A. M. And then Energy at ten thirty A. M. January twenty-second, Mystery Lunch Outing, costs three dollars. Meet at the Senior Center at eleven thirty A. M. Pay for your own meal. Only twelve spots available. January twenty-fourth, Name That Tune at one P. M., Oak Street Health. January thirty-first, Bingo, one P. M., Brooklyn Point. To register, please call two one six six three five four two 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 or visit Brooklyn Senior Center. Rec Center and the Senior Center will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth, in observance of Martin Luther King Day. The next Recreation Board will be held on Tuesday, January sixteenth, in the Rec Center Meeting Room, seven P. M. And that concludes my lengthy report. On to my council report. Welcome, Councilman Matt Mosley, to your first council meeting. My report, and it's going to be a Kevin Butler day. Today, my report, I would like to talk about the outstanding job our law director, Kevin Butler, has done and what an asset he is to our community, and how he saved this city thousands of taxpayers' dollars on handling of union labor negotiations, labor contract negotiations. I remember in the past the high attorney fees from previous law firms that this city incurred over the years. I was very vocal in getting law director to handle labor negotiations and did not support the hiring of outside law firms to represent this city. Mr. Butler did a fine job over the past years in these contract negotiations. This process takes time and patience, and along with the mayor and various directors, and by the way, hats off to them too. Now, back to Mr. Butler. I'm experienced in labor negotiations, and I've seen firsthand the money spent in these long meetings, sometimes having to go against friends and associates, and at times having to get them to agree on articles and raises that are not so popular. That itself is a lot of hard work. Process to reach an agreement and ratify a contract is very time-consuming, and that takes a lot of knowledge and hard work. And I commend Mr. Butler for his work ethic and dedication to our city, as he took it upon himself to not only learn the process, but to follow through like a pro. Again, great job. When I first got elected, the first thing I noticed was the amount of monies that was being spent on negotiations in an unproductive way, and I was told that the law director could not handle the work. Mr. Butler also did not have a great deal of experience in labor negotiations, but learned it quickly to save this city money. As a voice on council, Mr. Butler, you are a great asset to this city. This city should be extra thankful for the work that you do, settling most contracts without impasses. And I just want to say, it's a long report, that the amount of money that cities and unions spent in these negotiations is incredible. These high-powered attorney firms just, to me, gouge cities and gouge unions. And when you can get your own representatives either from the city or from the union to handle it in-house in a friendly way, those amount of monies that the union and the city save can go towards raises to our employees instead of attorneys getting paid those big bucks. And then in the end, what Mr. Butler did, the results are the same. You have a contract, you have it ratified, and you bring it back to the parties, the unions individually, to vote, and you have a contract. So again, I just want to thank Ron, he's been part of it, our mayor, Ron Van Kirk. And I know I thanked the directors, but they have put input on a lot of these contracts. And Mr. Butler being the driving force to settle all these contracts, and I appreciate that, and I am sure that the residents appreciate that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. To start off our meeting, Councilman Barowski noted what a great year two thousand and twenty-three was to be a resident in Brooklyn. I have to say, I am really looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four. There are so many exciting things happening in our city. Across the street, we start to see our library being built. There's big plans for Memorial Park over the next two years. We're finally starting to see some ideas come up for our Rec Center, which residents have been telling us for several years have needs updates. So while I'm glad that I was able to serve during two thousand and twenty-three, I have to say I am really excited about serving during two thousand and twenty-four. It looks like it will be a banner year here in Brooklyn. And also, as a personal note, I am excited to be on representing council on two new committees and commissions this year. So I look forward to working with the directors and other residents and learning more about the inner workings of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Happy New Year, and welcome to Councilman Matt Mosley. The last few meetings, we've been discussing the proposed ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash forty, establishing the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee for the city, Commission for the city. I want to thank our guest speaker, Lori Uragdi Eiler, from the Moreland Hills DEI Commission, for presenting and answering questions at the Committee of the Whole meeting tonight. A lot of good questions have been asked, and we have certainly had some debates surrounding this topic. Although we will be deferring the ordinance this evening, I believe we are making some progress, and hopefully we'll get some of the very important details ironed out during our special meeting, where we aren't so pressed for time. Lastly, I happened to come across a related article over the weekend that really resonated, and I hope it will help to put things in a different perspective. And it read, "Instead of fighting over an acronym, we should re-center the conversation on the actual principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion. To that end, we must proactively explain what diversity, equity, and inclusion work is, and even more importantly, what it's not. It's not about categorizing people as either oppressors or oppressed based on their identities. It's not about punishing people for who they are or supporting certain groups to the detriment of others. Instead, diversity is about casting a wide talent net to find a more representative group of skilled candidates. Equity is about designing systems and processes so that people from all backgrounds have a fair opportunity to do their best. And inclusion is about creating cultures where everyone could be their true self and thrive." That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Andy Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to Matt Mosley. The annual Christmas Outdoor Home Decorating Contest took place last month. Winners were the following: Eighty-nine-ten Morton, seventy-four-nineteen Plainfield, seventy-four-thirteen Southfield, sixty-two-twenty-three Trainmore, and sixty-three-oh-four Delora. Thank you to all the residents, to who, no matter how big or small your display was, took time to decorate to make it more enjoyable for those that live in our community and those that are just passing through. Laurel Garden Club, Friends of the Brooklyn Library, and Keep Brooklyn Beautiful are sponsoring another round of speakers at the Brooklyn Library on Tuesday, February sixth, at seven fifteen. We're going to have a speaker talking about seed-starting demonstrations. On Tuesday, April seventh, April second, at seven fifteen, it's going to be container vegetable gardening. Thursday, May sixteenth, at seven fifteen, it's going to be gardening for pollinators. You can sign up for these events through the library's website by clicking on the event and then registering for it. There's space for about seventy-five people in each event. We have already about thirty-five, forty people signed up, which is great to see, getting people back out together. Brooklyn Athletic Boosters and Post-Prom Committee are presenting Night at the Races two thousand and twenty-four on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, at five thirty at the UAW Hall on fifty-six-fifteen Chevrolet Boulevard. For more information, please contact Michelle Hillcue. Seats are, I think, on a waiting list right now. They're just looking for some sponsors for one horse race and some horses. So it is a popular event that's back. As Mr. Tansky said, thank you to Mr. Butler, and actually, thank you to all the directors. It's a good crew that really works together. Its pieces and parts make a whole. It's just really good and nice to see, and thank you, gentlemen, all of you. Also, thank you to Mr. Abruzzi with the Rec Department with Mark Hord Park. Had a chance to stop by there this evening before our meeting. Looks nice at night now. Thanks to Mary of the Energy also for coming up with the design. Actually, saw people in the dark, walking around with their dogs, and still having light in the trails and everything else. It just looks nice. It's a step forward. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, and I was informed he also has a school board report.
Good evening. Thank you. Last Tuesday, I was able to attend a portion of the school board's organizational meeting on January second, but I had to leave early because it was a conflict with our own organizational meeting that day. I would like to congratulate returning members of school board, Rocky Neal, Kelly Kroll, Karam Hazruni, and newly-elected Allison Rafter. I would also like to congratulate Kelly Kroll on being voted school board president, and Karam Hazruni for being voted school board vice president. I look forward to working collaboratively with all of you, as well as the superintendent, for this and many years to come. For all members of the public who are interested, there's also a vacancy on the school board. Anyone interested in getting involved should submit letters of interest to the treasurer on or before twelve P. M. January tenth. Interviews will be scheduled for the sixteenth of January and the eighteenth, if necessary. On January seventeenth, at six P. M. in the auditorium, there will be an information session for anyone to come and ask questions about the proposed changes for the upcoming bond issue this March. I highly encourage the public to attend. The school board's next meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-third, at five thirty in room one seventy-three. Keep in mind that meetings normally take place at six, but this one is scheduled for five thirty. And for my council report, good evening. I just wanted to thank our speaker, Lori, for coming out today and giving up her time, sharing her experience on the commission that she's a part of. Additionally, want to thank the voters of Brooklyn for trusting me and giving me an opportunity to represent you. A big thanks goes out to every council member that's up here, and the mayor for helping me get acclimated over the past month as quick as possible. I'll do everything in my power to represent you guys with integrity. Last month, I had the opportunity to take a tour of our service garage and fire department. I spent half a day at each department, asking questions and talking with city employees. Thank you to Director Verba and Chief Paul for allowing me the chance to better understand the day-to-day operations. It was very insightful, and I look forward to doing this annually with all of the departments. I've been in contact with other directors to schedule meetings, just kind of ran out of vacation time with my regular job. Coming up next month, as Andy said, the Athletic Boosters are hosting a Night at the Races. I'm not going to reiterate the information that he said, but if you need information, please reach out. In closing, I would like to say that I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and a healthy, happy New Year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I also would like to welcome Councilman Mosley. And I'll just echo what Councilman Tansky said, and that we're all very grateful to Director Butler and his efforts and success in negotiations, and especially this year, getting them all done ahead of schedule. You're very dedicated, not only to our community, but also to your profession. And thank you also to, I know Director Raguz is also an integral part of that negotiating team, and all our directors and chiefs who participate. We do appreciate your efforts. On January second, at six thirty P. M., council did have their organizational meeting, and I'll give a report from that. I was elected council president, and I thank my colleagues for their support. President Protem is Councilwoman Grodick. Planning Commission Representative, Councilman Coyle. Recreation Board Representative, Councilman Tansky. Economic Development Committee, Councilwoman Grodick. Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilwoman Barowski. The Finance Committee is myself, Councilman Selhertz, and Councilman Barowski. Public Works Committee is Councilman Selhertz, myself, and Councilman Mosley. Public Safety and Environmental is Councilwoman Grodick, Councilman Barowski, and Councilman Coyle. School Board Liaison is Councilman Mosley. Fair Housing Review Board is Councilwoman Fair Housing Review Board is Councilwoman Grodick. Volunteer Fire Dependence Board, we have two council people who represent us. That's Councilwoman Coyle and Councilwoman Mosley. Tax Incentive Review Board is myself. Sustainability Advisory Committee is Councilwoman Tansky. We did reaffirm that our regular meetings of council will be on the second and fourth Mondays at 7:00 PM. The Committee of the Whole will meet at 6:15 PM on the dates of regularly scheduled council meetings. And we meet September through June. And then we have a summer break, July and August, where there are no regular meetings, but there are frequently special meetings. We did also review our rules of council and we have a few changes that are in the legislation on our agenda this evening. The first is Director Butler and our clerk, Ms. Banish, worked to update the references to the charter based on the fact that the voters did approve our first amended charter at the election in November. Rules proposed by council. Rule number one was just a housekeeping item. We just moved the positions of Economic Development Committee and Domestic Abuse Commission up to this particular rule because this is where the, the positions are voted on by council. Rule number four, which deals with our opening procedures regarding our opening prayer or moment of silence. That is optional up to the council person whose turn it is. Rule number 12, this clarifies a little bit better the role of the Committee of the Whole. And I'll just read the passage so it makes sense to everybody. "A committee of the whole comprising all members of Brooklyn City Council will meet prior to each regularly scheduled council meeting or as necessary to discuss all agenda items, consider recommendation for legislative items and other topics of interest to council." Then under public participation, which is rule 15. We had a little bit of a, just change in the verbiage and I'll just read the sentence that's changing. "Speakers must be courteous in their language," and this is the part that we inserted, "and avoid causing disruption to the course of council business." Then under rule 29, which is posting of the agenda. We're going to add that if we do have emergency adoption of legislation requested, that we're going to post that reason why there's going to be emergency adoption on board docs in the detail of the legislative item so that the public will be aware of that ahead of time. And I believe those are all the changes. And I would just like to thank the Service Department for all their efforts in all the holiday decorations. Every year, they do a nice job, but I thought this year it was especially nice. I noticed some of the newer items. And I know that they really take pride in putting up those holiday decorations for all of us to enjoy. So Director Verba, if you could please pass that along, I'd appreciate it. And also thank our employees who unfortunately do have to work on the holiday. They're away from their families, police, fire, other police employees of our police department, the corrections officers. And we do appreciate them being there while we're all at home enjoying time with our families. That completes my report and now we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President. Happy New Year to everyone. I trust you had a wonderful, blessed Christmas season. My two want to welcome Mr. Mosley. I was thinking earlier today, I remember it was 12 years ago, that I was sworn into council for the first time. So congratulations and glad to have you onboard. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Pucci on unanimously being elected as council president. And Mrs. Pucci is a dedicated public servant and I very much look forward to working with her and the rest of council this year. On tonight's agenda are several appointments for various commissions and board vacancies. I'm grateful for so many residents volunteering their time to serve in these various capacities and thank council for their support. We've come to terms now with the fourth of the city's five unions. The contract will be on the next docket for January 22nd after the union votes on the agreement, if they approve it. Once it's been voted on, Mr. Butler will send out a synopsis to council. And it's already been mentioned tonight several times and I know he doesn't like the attention, but Mr. Butler, as I've said numerous times, thank you so much for your work, Mr. Raguz as well. And the directors, this is my first time going through this and they have done an excellent job showing me the ropes and it's, it's been a very positive process. And it's a benefit to everyone in the city. Some items that are going on in the city, even though it's winter time, there's still quite a few items taking place. The final preparation work for the installation of our permanent generator is now completed behind this building. We would anticipate having that delivered sometime this month, although I'm not holding my breath. It's been changed about six times and so we're hoping that it, that it gets here. We have a temporary one back there now, but the permanent one should be here the next month, I would hope. The park lighting and mark court parts already been mentioned by Mr. Selhertz and I'm grateful that that project is almost complete. We still have to put up the security cameras. Those will be installed in the coming weeks. And also, we received the final parts for the M1 field lighting. And it's seen a break in the weather to get a crane back there to be able to install the poles and that lighting. As long as the weather cooperates, but it doesn't look like it's going to late into this week, should be done in the next week or two. Finally, Norfolk Southern, the railroad company has finally begun their work on the Memphis Bridge bordering Lyndale. If you've driven through there, you've probably seen they're taking off a lot of the old concrete and getting ready to, to prepare to redo that bridge. And so we're grateful that work's underway. The new police vehicles that we purchased last year, the nine of them, they're being lettered and the equipment's being installed currently. Several of them are already completed and on the road, as I'm sure you've seen them around, they're the black Tahos. And it looks very, very nice. So I would encourage residents, keep your eye open for those and those should all be done in the next coming weeks. A new thing that the city's doing this year, we're very excited to partner with the YMCA. They're a national leader in summer camp administration and they'll be, we'll be partnering with them for our summer day camp program in 2024. We've staffed this internally the last several years and it's proven very, very difficult for our recreation department to staff that. And this partnership will alleviate that as well as provide some enhanced programming. I've met with our recreation center team several times on this. They've met with Dr. Clarice in the school. And we believe that this partnership is really going to be a great addition to our city. Registration for that actually opened up today. So I'm grateful for the continued partnership with the schools. They've been very, very helpful in running this successful program. And I want to thank Mr. Abruzzi and his team for their work with the Y. Two other projects that we have ongoing right now that I'll talk about, one was already mentioned, was the Recreation Center. We have chosen an architect that will be doing the design for the rework of the nadatorium side of the Recreation Center. And that scoping meeting will take place in the next couple of weeks and we hope to have a finalized contract with the architect by mid-February. And so they, they can begin their work of designing what the Recreation Center potentially would look like in the future. And the last one I'll mention is that the Senior Center Sanitary Improvement, this project was awarded. The pre-construction meeting will take place later this week and we hope to have that work done by the end of February. Of course, that's weather permitting. And as Mrs. Grodick mentioned, she's excited for 2024. Every week, our engineer gives me an update on all the projects that we have going on. And already in 2024, there are 24 different projects that the city is currently working on. So it's going to be a very busy year, a very exciting year. And so I'm looking forward to working with all of council and my, and the directors on that as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we do not have any reports from our directors, so we'll move on to council confirmations. The first is for the Planning Commission to reappoint Mr. Brian Summers to a six-year term ending December 31st, 2029.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment to the Recreation Board for Mr. Michael Roast to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is an appointment of Alex, Mr. Alex Burns to a three-year term to the Recreation Board, ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved.
To confirm the appointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is an appointment to the Recreation Board for Mr. Chris Cobus to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the appointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment to the Domestic Abuse Commission, Mrs. Joanne Marulis, to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment to the Domestic Abuse Commission of Mrs. Ruth Ann Scarborough, to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment to the Domestic Abuse Commission for Mrs. Robin Lawrence, to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is a reappointment of Mr. Mark Buxar to the Fair Housing Review Board, for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the reappointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is an appointment of Mrs. Karen Fratto to the unexpired term of the Fair Housing Review Board, ending December 31st, 2024.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the appointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is an appointment to the Fair Housing Review Board for Mr. Leon Stevens, to the unexpired term, ending December 31st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
To confirm the appointment, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next, we have a liquor permit and this is a transfer at 4295 Tiedemann from Sam Smart to Sunoco. Our police chief has no objections and we are looking to take a position of no objection.
So moved. Second.
For a position of no objection, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next, we have legislation under Old Business. The first item is ordinance 2023-40, which is up for third reading and adoption this evening. However, we anticipate deferring this to our next meeting to give us time to have a special meeting so that we can get everything finalized. And that's enacting Chapter 157 Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
Motion to defer to the January 22nd meeting.
Second.
To defer, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2023-42, which is up for third reading and adoption, amending section 717.03, maximum number of sales of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And this increases the number of garage sales that residents would be able to have from three to four. We need a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
Another second?
I think someone said second.
Kevin. Kevin, I'm sorry, couldn't I hear you? To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Under legislation New Business, we have resolution 2024-1, which is up for first reading. However, we're requesting adoption under suspension of the rules, authorizing a community cost share agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2024-1, which is up for first reading, amending section 121.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn by amending various rules of council, which I just previously read into the record. And this is on first reading.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
There was one word added in, in the order of business. Under the first public session, we inserted legislation.
Okay.
Legislative agenda.
Yes, you're right. Thank you. Okay, now we'll have our public, our second public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address and you will be recognized. And please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Oh, Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. And yes, Mr. Butler, thank you very much. It's in the past, I've bet hundreds of thousands of dollars. I won't mention a name. My first, yeah, complaint. Excuse me. All our new signs were supposed to be eight foot tall, which I thought was bizarre. Our new Welcome Brooklyn sign on Ridge Road is 13 feet tall. I took, I think it looks wonderful. Is there any reason, did they get an okay to make the sign taller than all the other signs, the new law? And Ridge Parks, Ridge, Ridge, excuse me, Ridge and Bit Off, the sign for Giant Eagle and that. If they were to build a new shopping center now, would that sign be illegal? The decals on the city truck, I saw them, they look nice and they're so small. Is there a reason for that? I mean, I was looking, is that a Brooklyn Plow Truck? And I saw this little miniature sign of the, of the new thing, which is fine, but I really think it should be larger. And then talking about signs again, the ones on 480, the new ones, which look nice. The back sign, there's multiple color. The one color is very lightly done. I, I think it should be brighter and bolder. When stores go out of business, example Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, going to be, excuse me, that these businesses should take their signs totally down and paint it black or something so it doesn't say Bed Bath &amp; Beyond for the less, next, unpresentable future, whatever. I think that's all my wonderful news this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn? Okay, Mayor, I don't know who wants to address the, or Mr. Butler, the height of the signs.
Sure, I'll let you address that one, Mr. Butler, the height of the sign. But as far as the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that's, those are private companies.
I understand.
And we actually do potentially have someone that will be potentially moving in there. So it'll be obviously changed when they go in there. So it's an expense, obviously, to have someone come out to take the sign down and put up a new one. So my guess is, I'm just guessing, because it's against a private company, that they just do it all in one fell swoop as opposed to doing it separately. And as far as the height requirements for the Ridge Park Square sign, I don't know that. I don't know if Mr. Butler would know that off the top of his head, but if he doesn't, I can certainly get the answer for you.
I think he was referring to Bit Off Plaza.
Or Bit Off Plaza, I'm sorry, I said the wrong plaza, but yes, same thing. I can, I can find out. Right. It is, it is, that is for, it is for sure grandfathered, but I don't know, I don't know if it would be allowed or not. I'd have to look it up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Butler.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, as well. Mr. Ardito, the new zoning code, as with any zoning code that enacts new regulations, does provide for the grandfathering of